It's so awesome to see so many of our board members joining us this morning. And I see Mayor Tirico has popped on here as well. So, good morning. Thanks for joining us. And it's 9:30. So, I'm going to get started with some introductions. Good morning. My name is Kalen Rizvold. I am the President and CEO of the Naperville Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you to all of you for joining us this morning for this fantastic town hall with Representative Bill Foster and Sean Caston as well. Also want to say thank you as well to the Naperville Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors who are joining us and our local city officials here as well. I saw our Mayor Tirico and Councilman Kevin Coyne on here as well. So, thank you to all of you and to Reba Osborne, our Director of Government Affairs, for putting this all together and really truly doing a lot of the work advocating on your behalf, both behind and in front of the scene. So, thank you to Reba. I'm going to get started. We asked that you all mute and use the chat function. Kind of how this is going to work is I'm going to introduce our Congressman one at a time and give them a chance for some opening statements and go into some Q and A. I've got a few questions if you guys don't, but I have a feeling you're going to be a questioning bunch. So, throw them in the chat and I'll be able to ask and we can have this really great open dialogue. So, thank you again for joining us. I'm going to get it kicked off by introducing Congressman Bill Foster. He is a scientist and businessman representing the 11th Congressional District of Illinois since 2013. He serves on the House Financial Services Committee and he is the Chairman of the Investigations and Oversight Subcommittee of the House Science and Technology Committee. Before serving in Congress, he spent more than two decades as a high-energy particle physicist over at Fermilab and recently appointed to the House Select Committee on the Coronavirus Crisis. So, thank you for joining us and I'll give you the floor for some opening remarks.
Sure. Well, first off, I'd like to just thank everyone and say hello to my colleague, Sean Caston. I'm really proud to work with Sean as we're doing what we can to help people of Naperville and everyone we represent get through this crisis. And just want to thank Reba and everyone involved here. Also, well, just bring you some brief updates and mostly we're, you know, Sean and I are here to listen to what you think is important, what's going on. You know, we're obviously in the midst of the battle against COVID-19. It's a crisis that had an effect on probably every single area of life in our country. And last month, Congress passed an unprecedented set of relief packages to protect frontline workers and to provide economic relief for families and small businesses. The businessmen and businesswomen, sorry about that, and my staff wrote that correctly and I muffed it myself, small businesses of all kinds. The CARES Act expanded unemployment insurance funding, increased access to telehealth services, provided direct cash payments to individuals, and made funding available for small businesses struggling to help keep people employed. I also want to provide a brief update on PPP, which we just increased the funding for two weeks ago and are likely to further increase when, if we go back to Washington in the coming week. The Paycheck Protection Program, or PPP, has helped businesses keep their workforce employed during the crisis. As of the end of April, more than 960,000 PPP loans valued at nearly $90 billion had been processed by nearly 5,300 lenders, mostly banks and credit unions, but other lenders were involved as well, were approved just in the second round. The second round opened on April 27th and right after the PPP and the Healthcare Enhancements Act went into force. And of the loans that were approved as of April 29th, more than 61% of those loans were from small lenders, where small is defined as fewer than $10 billion in assets, which on the scale of banks is actually, you know, relatively small lender. In dollar amounts, a total of more than $43 billion in approved PPP loans were from small lenders and a total of approximately $63 billion were from small and medium lenders as of April 29th. And as we're working on the next phase of legislation, you know, I'm continuing to fight for the needs of frontline workers, family, and small businesses, especially to ensure that we can get through this crisis together. There's one specific thing that actually I was on a, last night on a phone conference discussing the exact changes we're going to make. One of the things that we clearly didn't do carefully enough in the first version of the PPP is to make sure that the Treasury and Small Business Administration prioritize smaller loans over large ones. You know, to me, this should have been sort of a no-brainer. They could have done it if they wanted, but they, what was set up was a first-come-first-served system where if you could get your paperwork in electronically and fast, you were at the head of the line. And so, this meant that a lot of the smaller businesses simply didn't have, you know, the banking relationships or the bankers could just sort of, you know, help them out. And as a result, a lot of, especially the largest loans, ended up going to the, you know, to the larger businesses. And so, as a result, when the money ran out, the ones left holding the bag were disproportionately to small businesses. And this is not what Congress intended. And what we're doing this time around, at least if they accept the language fix, is if they anticipate at any point these funds are running out, they fill them from the bottom. They simply, the Treasury and Federal Reserve said, okay, we only have enough money to give, say, the first $300,000 of loans to everyone. And so, that anyone with a loan $300,000 or less will get all of the money they ask for, but if you're asking for $10 million, you'll only get the first $300,000. And with this sort of mechanism, it would have made a huge difference in making sure that everyone gets a first bite at the apple before, you know, some of the larger, some of them publicly held companies. I can talk a lot more of that if we have specifically questions on there. Another big issue that Sean and I are working on is to make sure that relief funds flow equally to all people, no matter what state they live in. You know, historically, there's this huge problem that large population states like Illinois, just, we lose something between $20 and $40 billion every single year because we pay a lot more in federal taxes than we get back in federal spending. And this has been going on for 40 years. It's been documented to be going on for 40 years. And the recipients by and large are the, you know, are the, well, the states in the Sun Belt in the West, low-population states. And what happens is the Senate writes these spending formulas. Unfortunately, that happened again when the Senate wrote their version of the CARES Act. And so, what happened is that they had a formula that meant that if you're a small town in the, or a medium-sized town in a state like Wyoming, you got five times more than a small town of the same size in Illinois, or New York, or California, you name it. And so, you were effectively punishing people in cities if they happen to be in a state with large population. And this is something that happens over and over in the Senate. So, the, you know, Sean and I got, you know, very strong support for the letter that we sent to leadership from both Democrats and Republicans, because this is not a Democrat or Republican issue. And so, we'll see how that may or may not be reflected in the next version. I know that, you know, one or both of us is regularly piped up in our phone conferences we have on this and say, this is not an issue that's going to go away. And if we, if we have, you know, new versions of the coronavirus response that really continue this pattern of rooking Illinois, it's going to get harder and harder to get the consensus that we've had so far in favor of it. Anyway, happy to answer any questions I have when it's up. And let's see, I guess there's probably an introduction for Sean ready to go here.
I have to unmute. There is. Thank you so much. And I will now introduce Congressman Sean Caston. He represents Illinois' 6th Congressional District and serves on the House Financial Services, Science, Space, and Technology, and the Select Climate Crisis Committees. He's also co-chair on the new Dems Climate Change Task Force. He earned a Bachelor of Arts in Molecular Biology and Biochemistry from Middlebury College in '93, and a Master of Engineering Management and Master of Science and Biochemical Engineering from the Thayer School of Engineering at Dartmouth College. He worked as a clean energy consultant and manager at Arthur D. Little from '97 to 2000, and then served as President and CEO of Turbos Stream Corporation. In 2006, he co-founded Recycle Energy Development, R E D, who built, owned, and operated industrial sited waste energy recovery plants throughout North America. Thank you so much for joining us, Representative Caston, and wanted to give you a chance to give some opening remarks to our group as well.
Thank you, Kalen. It's always weird to hear your resume read back. I think we can safely stipulate that both Congressman Foster and I, you know, decided at a very young age that we wanted to become members of Congress and we just took the traditional route to getting there from high-energy physics to biochemistry. The, you know, I would echo what Bill said, that we're here to listen and learn and, you know, I think, I think all of us, all of us in Congress and all of us as American citizens are in this unprecedented moment right now. We have never had a point in our history. And I think if anybody says that they know exactly what to do in this moment, they need to take their ego down a couple pegs. The jobs report that just came out yesterday was, is horrific. 20 million jobs lost. Unemployment level's not seen since the Great Depression and that is almost certainly an understatement. It doesn't include the undocumented population and whatever you think about whether undocumented folks should work in this country, they spend money. And there's, some of the economists we've been talking to have said, there probably is another, you know, 5 million maybe that adds to those rolls if you were to include that in the number. There's a significant number of people in the jobs report who did not file as unemployed. They filed as essentially temporarily furloughed. And the good news is that means that a lot of employers, of course, are hoping this will end quickly, but if those people were to refile as unemployed, it would be an additional 5% bump in the unemployment level that's there. So, these numbers are horrific and we are, the only way that we recover is to put this public health crisis behind us. There's no way to come out of this, to come out of this economically and still have the public health crisis lingering. And what's, you know, what's scary is that there are countries that have turned the corner. We're not one of those countries. We're still running 2,000 or more deaths a day. We have plateaued, you know, and I know it's been said a lot, but you got to keep looking at the fact that South Korea, which has about a quarter of our population, had their first confirmed case the same day we did. They've had 255 fatalities. We are over 75,000. And it's, I just urge us all to, everything that we do, as painful as this economic downturn is, to recognize that if we start rushing to open too quickly, we're going to make things worse. And there's a tension there. We get it. You can see that political tension pan out, but our actions determine how many people are going to be alive in the weeks and months ahead. And the virus doesn't discriminate. The, I think, you know, one of the biggest challenges, and as you think about questions for us, the, with that unprecedented downturn, we have also injected an unprecedented amount of money into the economy. The total federal budget last year was about $5 trillion. We've now approved almost $3 trillion in emergency spending on top of that number. And it was necessary, thank goodness, that interest rates are so low right now because you can conceivably see a way, you know, that we could get, that we could get through this as long as we keep focusing on those things that are going to grow the economy. But these numbers are huge and there's a, there's this constant tension that I think we all feel in Congress between, how do we, when the economy is in total freefall, how do we inject the money into the economy as quickly as possible? And at the same time, how do we make sure that that money gets to where it needs to go? And it's almost impossible to do both. And, you know, you all who are on the front lines and sitting there seeing where this goes, you know, I'm looking forward to your feedback of, as we've moved around, where did we get it to? You know, we did, in the PPP program that Bill talked about, we did work hard to try to make sure that we didn't do this just through traditional small business authorities, which would have meant that cash was limited to people who, you know, pass certain credit tests. It would have meant that cash didn't necessarily easily get to employees because we don't, outside of the unemployment insurance program, we don't really have a good tool to get money to employees right now. And so, we crafted this thing that's neither, you know, what's the analogy? Neither something or foul, I'm having a brain melt there. But it's not quite an unemployment program. It's not quite a small business loan. The money comes based on your payroll and it's a forgivable grant as long as you use it primarily for payroll expense. But the, but even within that mechanism, the, some of the reasons that Bill was pointing out, folks who were 1099 employees, who really should have been applying for the PPP loan because they weren't covered since they weren't employees, had some gaps in how to get it to them. We expanded to include nonprofits, but we didn't include all nonprofit classifications. We may or may not get some expansions. And of course, as a local chamber, I'm sure you're well aware of that because I think you guys probably weren't covered in the last round. And it wasn't for ill intent. It was just sort of saying, they're saying, how do we get this out quickly? How do we set the protocols up? And how do we make sure that the institutions we have that were designed for one purpose can be melded to another? And that takes time, which again puts us at odds of getting the money out quickly. So, you know, give us some advice of what you guys are seeing, how you push forward on the ground to get it done. And I also just want to give a thanks. I know Mayor Tirico is on, really wanted to thank him for joining in the letter that we sent to leadership. We had 41 mayors and county board chairs who sent a letter to leadership consistent, essentially amplifying the letter that Congressman Foster and I had previously written to say, we really need to make sure that we get equal per capita funding. And it was really a nice show of strength to say, this is a bipartisan issue, mayors from all around the 6th District, you know, there was no, there was no differentiation by your party affiliation or by the size of the town you have, just a consistent recognition that the, what the virus, the virus may be the least discriminatory thing in our society right now. All at once is a warm body. And those areas that have a high concentration of warm bodies were the places that saw the biggest surge in this virus early on. As we've started to clamp down in urban areas, we've now seen the virus surging to rural parts of the country, but particularly to places where a lot of people are congregating, prisons, meatpacking plants. And it's scary what we're seeing happening in those areas. But when we allocated funding essentially to land rather than to people, we made our public health crisis worse because the virus is where the people are. And the funding should have followed that as well. And so, I thank Mayor Tirico and all the other mayors and managers who signed on to that. We'll keep pushing that piece of it. And with that, let me maybe stop talking and hear your questions and thoughts and concerns and recommendations. And if you want to throw stones at us, I'm thankful we're on a Zoom call.
Awesome. Well, thank both of you for your opening remarks. And I'm going to get right into the questions. As a reminder, if you guys have a question, just type it in the chat and I appreciate you all being very respectful during this time as well. And I am going to kick it off with a question from our mayor. Mayor Tirico asked, when the CARES Act funded cities and counties over 500,000, was that county money intended to be distributed by the municipalities?
I think it should have said to municipalities, but instead of by.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'll give just a quick answer and Bill, you can chime in on intent. I think the 500,000 test was, it was a little bit of a backdoor and I'm hopeful that we'll fix it in the next one. The, initially, the whole idea was that funds should flow to states and there was a push that came in late in the negotiations to say, let's make sure that major metro areas get it as well. And the 500,000 was a little bit arbitrary. It wasn't intend, it was more, it was an attempt to add in municipalities, not an attempt to exclude municipalities, but the test of how to define a municipality got that 500,000. There are significant gaps that have shown up. Bill and I's colleagues from Missouri on the Financial Services Committee regularly point out that St. Louis only has 350,000 residents. So, you know, you think Naperville is a small city. St. Louis is also a small city that got excluded from that. So, we're pushing to get it in. It wasn't, but it wasn't an intentional effort to cause anything to happen. It was, the intent was to try to get some money from municipalities. And I think in the rush to design it quickly, the, you know, made some mistakes and not thinking about some of the ramifications for smaller towns. Bill, anything you'd add on that?
Yeah, well, no, this is a, you know, it's a very much a state-by-state issue. There's a lot of mistrust between the cities and everything else in a lot of states. I think it's, you know, you might think it's big in Illinois, but it's much worse in, for example, many of the southern states. And people in the cities there just routinely feel like they're rooked by the state government, that they're just deliberately shortchanging everything from education funding to everything else. And so, this is, this is one of the reasons. The other thing to at least be aware of is that the special funding route that went directly to larger cities over 500,000, any money they got, got subtracted from the state total. So, this isn't like states that have big cities got more. You know, that would have been a very unsenate-like thing to do. So, they made sure that whatever money went directly to cities, to large cities, got subtracted off of what the state got. So, that's, you know, and it's going to appear again because at least if Democrats, you know, get their way in the negotiations, which is not clear, some of the money is going to go straight to cities with a much lower threshold. I think we're now talking $10,000 as the minimum size. And so, that there will be, there'll be some of the money sort of directed at cities below 10,000, some above 10,000, and less than some higher level, and then some at the largest cities. There's also going to be money that goes straight to the counties. And so, then the issues will arrive. What happens when the county gets money when most of the people in some county are in a single city and how that splits? And there's going to be a tug-of-war there happening. We had a mayor's conference just recently with Steve there, where we were talking about, how is that revenue split going to happen? A lot of those decisions will end up being made at the county level and also in Springfield. So, you know, there's no perfect, you know, if I was to design the formula, it would be just straight per capita. And that the total amount of money you'd get, you know, you can say, okay, if it goes to the county I'm in, it goes to the city I'm in, it goes to the state I am, I'm in, but you should have the same amount of money per person. And that should be the guiding principle that unfortunately we seem to be routinely violating here.
Thank you. Kalen, I'm going to have to run to swearing in, but if I could just do one follow-up, since this is a business conversation, I can say that DuPage County received 162, and I'm not sure, I think Will County about 120. One of the things they're talking about at the county level is business grants and business loans to be made available throughout the county. I would suggest that the chamber members and executive board look into that and, you know, write a letter or throw your support behind that to advocate for the businesses in our area.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Congressman, I apologize, I have to run, but thank you very much for taking the time.
Well, thank you. Thank you for staying in contact with our offices. We really appreciate it because you're sort of our receiving antenna for, you know, what's happening on the ground when we're trying to keep things moving in DC.
Thanks Congressman.
Thanks. Nice to see you, Steve.
Thank you. And our next question is from Ian Holthaus, the Chairman of the Board of Directors for the chamber here. A recent chamber survey shows that a third of Naperville local businesses cannot survive for more than two months through the shutdown period. Is there anything we can, you can do to advocate for another federal relief bill, maybe even stronger than the CARES Act?
Well, you know, that's what we're working on and hoping to vote for next week. You know, one of the things that I'd like to see, there's a limit on the PPP about what fraction of the money can be used for expenses besides straight payroll. And if there is enough money, enough of an increase in the bill to support it, I would like to actually give some relief on that number. Because the survival of a lot of businesses is partly a reflection of the fact that they can't make rent payments when they have no customers. You know, that's a significant part. And we have to, you know, we have to think through, you know, what we really want to accomplish and that's tough because there is a, you know, there is, there's a huge spectrum of businesses and employers and employees of all different scales. You know, at one scale, there's maybe the sole proprietor who has their life savings tied up in a business they've been running for most of their lives. And at the other scale, there are the giant public companies, you know, the United Airlines of the world. You know, companies like United Airlines can and have gone bankrupt without stopping the planes or stopping the jobs. And the decisions you have to make there are, you know, what is the government duty to the small shopholder at one end or to the shareholders of giant publicly-held companies? And I think in between, there's a huge spectrum of, you know, what's our responsibility to the family-held businesses, which maybe have a handful of restaurants? Or what about when they become a giant chain or when they become public companies? You know, at each step, I think they become less and less sympathetic, but we have to make rules that, you know, that are based on law instead of just sort of arbitrary things. You know, this rule that has been in place for the Small Business Administration that companies with less than 500 employees are treated very differently than ones over 500 employees. And so, if you happen to be a company with 501 employees, really, you know, does that how? And trying to do this fair and do it fast is the challenge here. And then, the other thing that we have to think about is some of the assistance is provided directly to people. Like, one of the things I'm most proud of in this thing is the fact that you don't have to pay to get yourself tested for COVID. And I hope that when we, when the vaccine becomes available, you won't have to pay. And this is direct assistance to people. And that's a big part of the solution because, you know, we can do everything we can to keep the companies together and businesses together, but if the customers do not return, it's not, it's not going to help. You know, the airlines cannot be saved unless people, and airline jobs cannot be saved unless people come back and return. And that's why, as Sean said, it's the public health that's the final solution here.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to that, Ian, is that the, I think I would brace yourself that in my view, number one, there will absolutely be significant additional funding. There's no doubt that there's going to be larger packages coming. I hope I'm wrong, but my suspicion is that we've probably, we're probably approaching the end of the bipartisan kumbaya funding. And the reason I say that is because the, if you look broadly at where the needs are in society, the, if you focus exclusively on what's bipartisan, support for small businesses is overwhelmingly bipartisan. That's why we had the PPP. That's why we renewed the PPP. These were darn near unanimous votes on the floor getting them through. Support for the elderly is pretty bipartisan. And so, there were, you know, there were programs to make sure that Medicare is shored up and the allocations that went out to hospitals were significantly biased towards hospitals with large Medicare populations. We're now at a point where there are huge gaps, you know, the, you know, talking to the governor, he said the unemployment program in Illinois, when it was built, was designed with the expectation that the largest surge capacity they were ever going to see was the 2008-level surge because they had no historical data to suggest that it would be any bigger. We're now an order of magnitude or more beyond that level and the unemployment system is totally overwhelmed and that's a state-run program. Well, when the Senate Majority Leader is saying, let the states go bankrupt, it becomes very, now becomes very partisan to say, we need to make sure that the states have the resources to implement what's out there. The hospitals that have been really squeezed from the COVID crisis tend not to be hospitals that have large Medicare populations, but hospitals that have large Medicaid populations. And, you know, so supporting the, you know, the poorer communities, the communities of color, these become, that becomes a more partisan argument as well. And to come back to where we keep coming to, if we don't solve the public health crisis, everything else is harder. And the, you know, whether, you know, whether you are a poor Medicaid-eligible person who depends on state resources or, you know, a completely rich person who fits all, you know, who owns a small business, the virus doesn't care. It infects you and wherever you cough, it bounces around and moves somewhere else. And so, I think the, you know, as we start thinking through, we've got to figure out how to make sure that that fund gets to the place that is most needed. And to the extent that those deepest needs are not bipartisan, we're going to, it's going to be, I think the political tension is going to start increasing. And again, I hope I'm wrong. I don't, I don't want that to be, I don't think any of us want that to be a partisan fight, but I think it is a challenge. And I think the, you know, I guess the last thing that I just leave you with is that the, when I was speaking with the, at a long conversation with the China Desk at the Federal Reserve, because I was trying to understand what's going to happen as far as sort of lending and borrowing balances as we go through this, just because I had this concern that the countries that get through this the quickest are going to be the countries that took the most aggressive measures to shut it down earliest. And by and large, you know, if you believe the And, and by and large, you know, if, if you believe the data, which I think is a wide-open question, but if you believe the data from some of the Asian countries suggests that they could be at the forefront, in any event, separate conversation. But what they pointed out is that globally, we are going to see everybody have to spend down most of their cash reserves to get through this. This is the Federal Reserve talking. And those of us who have the ability to deficit spend are going to have to deficit spend to get through this. As we go through, there's a real political fallout to happen if, when you're done, you've got households with no cash in the bank, people who haven't had a job for weeks, federal governments with massive deficits, and some pockets of the economy that said, I was doing fine, I had a lot of cash reserves, and I got a PPP loan, and I took it anyway. And that may be totally legal, but that has, there's political fallout we have to manage there. And I think certainly a lot of my colleagues, you know, like Congressman Foster and others who were, you know, lived through the 2008 crisis and some of that political fallout that came in that moment, we have to be thinking through that and, you know, welcome your help in how we find a way to thread that needle.
Sure. And that brings me to my next questions, and I'm going to kind of combine two from Sylvie from KLA Schools and John Webber, asking, you know, PPP funds run out at the end of May, can we expect additional relief past May? And then in addition to that, you know, are borrowers under risk of being sued or prosecuted under the government's False Claims Act? You know, is this something that Congress is working on to protect borrowers from that type of risk as well?
Well, the first one is certainly if Sean and I have anything to say about it, which we expect to, that we're going to have additional money on this. You know, this is one of the things that, that has really succeeded. And the, the counterargument that we're starting to raise more and more is all of this spending is going to bankrupt our country. And I'll tell you the way I think about that, I don't believe it's a problem. You know, we just spent between two, two and three trillion dollars in these. We'll probably end up spending $5 trillion before this is over. And so that, I believe, should be compared to what's the net worth of Americans. If you just set up, how much does everyone in America own? It's about $120 trillion. And against that, we have about $20 trillion in debt. So we have $120 trillion in net worth, and we have about what used to be 20 and will end up being $25 trillion in government debt. So it's not as a country that we're about to, you know, go bankrupt and have hyperinflation. We're not in a situation like, for example, Iceland was like. During the financial crisis, Iceland was in this very interesting situation where they had a bunch of European banks that were domiciled in Iceland, the banks failed, the bank debt fell over to the government. There was a situation during the crisis when you could have sold every single thing in Iceland and not had enough money to pay off the government debt. Okay? And as a result, the government said, to heck with it, we're just, you know, abandoning it, we're going to default on the debt and start over again, which they did. But, but we are nowhere near that place because, because of the $120 trillion that is the wealth of Americans. And secondly, there's another number that doesn't get talked about much, which is the government owns a lot of stuff. You know, these are things like the mineral rights underneath government-held land, simply the value of real estate and, you know, buildings and machinery that government owns. That number is difficult to estimate, but the market value of assets owned by the government are in the range of 200 to 300 trillion dollars. All right? And so that's, and I'm not advocating that we should auction off the mall in Washington or anything like that, but there is a lot of things that government owns, you know, and that's one of the reasons why, when there's a worldwide panic, everyone says the United States government is not going to go bankrupt, because it owns a lot of very valuable things, as well as the intrinsic wealth of Americans. And so that, so that, when you're staying up night worrying about the survival of your business, don't worry that it will fail because the government will, you know, will spend itself into a mess. We're, we're very far from that right now. We obviously can't do it forever, but that, that is an argument that we have to push back against when it starts to appear.
The only thing I'd add to what Bill said is, I've been pushing since I got in that we should create a national balance sheet, because I find that 90% of the people who say that we should run the government like a business proceed to then make arguments that would fail a freshman MBA class. Because if you don't know what the asset value is, it's hard to argue that the debt levels are too high. The, and this goes to the conversation I was having with the Federal Reserve, because I was trying to understand what the long-term view on debt was. And their observation was that the, the entire world is going on a massive borrowing spree right now. There is also still large pockets of capital that are looking for a place to park, from pensions to endowment funds and, you know, all the places where cash needs to sit, insurance company money, et cetera, et cetera. And what they observed was that the, there has already been the start in a huge spread in interest rates in both private and public markets, where at one end, if you are, if you're a, you know, a fracking company that's been dependent on high-yield debt and, and the price of oil and gas is collapsing, the, you are not going to be able to borrow for a long time. Nobody wants to put that money there. If you're a Latin American economy with the history of defaulting on your government debt and has some of the, you know, really awful ratios like Congressman Foster was just talking about, your interest rates are going through the roof. On the other hand, when that's going on, for those folks who still do have money, they're looking for a safe place to park it. And, and we're seeing in places like Germany, and places like the United States, and in the, you know, and in the AAA credit companies in the private sector, people, you know, you know, on an inflation-adjusted basis, basically paying you for the right to hold their money. And, and so we are going to see in the United States zero and maybe even negative real interest rates for the foreseeable future. And if we're going to run the government like a business, then if you've got access to hugely cheap debt, let's find places where we can, we can borrow that money and invest in returns significantly above our cost of borrowing and lever up our equity, right? I mean, that's how you'd run the government like a business in these moments. And, and some of those questions are hard, because, you know, what's the, you know, if we expand unemployment insurance, you wouldn't think of that as an asset. On the other hand, if, if the difference is, in one scenario GDP contracts by 20%, and in the other scenario GDP contracts by 15%, that's a 5% return on that, but that's a little hard to do it. On the other hand, some of those are really easy. And, and I think as we come through this, what I think is going to be the really big bill going forward is if we don't turn the corner on public health quickly, we're not going to turn the corner on the economy quickly. And that means the only person who's really going to, the only entity who's going to have the cash to spend is going to be the federal government. And we've got a, a once-in-a-generation opportunity to make a major infrastructure investment in the economy. Modernize all those roads and bridges that we worry about, our schools that need upgrading, our energy system that's dilapidated and old. We're going to have a chance to do that, and, you know, all of those things that I just mentioned will have significant high returns on assets. And if you can fund them with 0% money, let's run the government like a business.
I have a bunch more questions I'm going to try to get to, because I want to make sure that we can share the people's stories who are here as well. But I do want to follow up on the second part of my last question about the False Claims Act. Is Congress working to protect borrowers from this risk?
I know that we're discussing it, and I can't tell you the state of, you know, there's two, there's two discussions about legal liability for businesses. One is the one you mentioned, you know, because there is, I, my guess is that if things are done in good faith, that, you know, even if there's a technical risk, that, you know, no sane, you know, prosecutor is going to go and, you know, and go after someone who misstated something. The other one, which is, is really going to be a delicate discussion, has to do with the legal liability when you reopen. And that you don't, no one understands for sure what the real risks are to your employees and to your, you know, and to the people that come into your business. Everyone is going to be making a guess. And, and I think what we're, we're struggling for here is to find some measure of good faith, that if you're really operating where, according to everyone's best knowledge, and this is something where you really need the federal government to set standards. And I was very disappointed, frankly, that the Center for Disease Control had a very detailed set of specifications for what is necessary for, to reopen business that were spiked and thrown out and told not to be issued recently by the administration. What businesses need, frankly, is, is to say, here is a list of, here is a list of best practices. If I am following those best practices, if I am informing all of my workers and my customers of the risk as we best know it, then, then you get a legal shield. But if you don't have, you don't have, you know, the instructions to follow, then who knows whether you're doing things right or not?
And actually, one of our board members, Christina Kitten-Kitchell, wrote in and asked that exact question. How do companies' liability to open potentially expose employees to the virus, how's that going to be addressed? And if they're in compliance with the guidelines, what in place? How do you protect yourself against the lawsuits?
Right. And so the problem is, when the CDC spends a lot of effort, comes up with guidelines, and then frankly, the White House tells them, no, don't issue these, because they're not what I want to do. Then, then, then the business is left with no guidance at all. And this model of saying, well, we'll just let the governors figure stuff out, is sort of a recipe for chaos. You know, the governors are pretty busy, and they don't know, they don't have the expertise in-house to sit there and say, how does this virus spread? What are the dangerous and the not-so-dangerous practices? And then the way we should set guidelines, you know, which can be a function of the size of the restaurant, the density of the, you know, of the crowd that you're talking about. So you can have sophisticated guidance that, with a lot of variance from rural areas to urban areas and so on. But we need, we need clear, clear, explicit guidance. And it was very disappointing to see that, that all that effort went in to develop that guidance, and then they were told to throw it in the trash can. I, you know, I think that's the one thing, I think, that the chambers can actually have their voices heard on, is that we need that guidance so we know what's safe.
And we want to be able to protect our businesses.
Yeah. And then, and then you're going to find, I think, you know, we talked to the trial lawyers on this, and they said that actually is all right. They only have an interest in going after companies that deliberately violate the safety rules, which sounds, you know, that, that should be their job. So I hope, yeah, to that, to that.
I want to amplify what Bill said, but also just put a request out to you all. The, in moments like this, it is critically imperative that those of us in leadership positions send a signal that says, we have thought about this, we've thought through the ethics, we've thought through the equities, and here is what, here is what good faith looks like. Right? And, and Bill's point on the CDC, I think there's going to be a push that, that we're currently working on to put, to strengthen OSHA guidance and, and put enforcement rules around OSHA, because if you have a clear set of rules from OSHA that says, if you reopen, this is a safe level of social distancing, this is a safe, you know, this is who should have masks, this is what the obligations are, you put that all in place, and now you've essentially been given a liability waiver, because you said, I complied with, I complied with these rules, I did everything. But I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you'll never get sued, but you, you take my point and you get that leadership. And it's been, I, I think it's been very frustrating that the White House has been so reluctant to do that. However, there have been, I, I think that responsibility and that opportunity lies on anybody in a leadership position. And there was this really interesting dynamic going on a month ago in hospitals who were, who were asking for some help on, on what they could tell their doctors, who were concerned about medical malpractice suits. If, if you've got three ventilators and four people who need the ventilator, what do you do as a doctor? You know, what's the, what's the equitable thing to do? If you've got a PPE limit and you can only allocate to certain people in the hospital, what do you do? And that guidance wasn't coming from Washington. And a number of the hospitals got together and said at the, at the administrative level in the hospital, we will come up with an ethical set of guidelines that says, this is how we're going to address this, these are the rules, this is how we're going to allocate. And then put the doctors in a position where at least the doctors would know, the, I don't have to think about this on a regular basis. We've essentially developed a set of rules, people who have the time to think through this put this out, and now we could follow those rules and take some of that stress off them. And ideally, that happens all the way at the top of the federal government and comes down. In its absence, I think all of us in a position of, of some authority and control, who have the bandwidth to think through, what's the, what's the equitable way to do this? It protects the people who report up to us, or to you all, but I think it also gives you, gives you an appropriate legal cover to say, look, we, we acted in our best efforts. And that's, and that's just as true for the banks that started this question of saying, I got these two documents that are in conflict, which one do I sign? I want to get money out. To the extent you've put together a protocol that says, in, in the moment, we wanted to act in best efforts, this was the protocol we came up through, we thought through, it was done in good faith, now somebody has to attack? Did you actually have a structure that you thought through and addressed this? Which I think is a much harder lawsuit to win than saying, you treated these two people differently for arbitrary reasons.
Right. And I believe it was Representative Foster who brought up the governor, which brings me to my next question from Kevin Coyne, who's a city councilman here in Naperville. He says, "A number of our local leaders and businesses have voiced great concern about DuPage County being paired with Cook County in our governor's reopening plan, as our COVID numbers are nowhere close to those in Cook County. Do either of you plan to join the call to allow DuPage County to be given more local control when determining reopening plans?"
That's an interesting question. I, I don't know, Sean, you want to pick up that hot potato? You know, there's, one of the problems with, you know, there, there are a lot of people that move across county boundaries here. You know, I think the, I think most all the big cities in my district span multiple counties. And so, you know, the, you know, a county isn't a magic border the way a national boundary is. So that I think, I think the rules I would be most comfortable with would be ones that are a function of the density, the size of crowds, that sort of, that sort of rule. And those will naturally be easier to meet in the suburbs than they are in, in the city. And, and probably most difficult of all on public transit. You know, I think that in, in the fullness of time, the suburbs are going to do very well as a result of the COVID crisis. That, you know, for the last couple decades, you know, there was this problem that all the young kids want to go live downtown, and it seemed like the future was moving downtown, and that was a problem even for, even for out in Naperville. But, but I think that people are reconsidering that. You know, they really want to, you know, the idea of having their own yard where they can exercise is a lot more appealing than it was, and a lifestyle that doesn't depend so heavily on public transit and crowded spaces. And so that there may be a kind of rebound here, at least locally, that'll be one of the positive effects here, perhaps.
And Kalin, I'm, I'm sorry, because I had an audio issue there and missed out the second half of your question, but wanted to just share that the, in the conversations I've had with some of the health experts in the governor's office, the, they've been, they've been very thoughtful about balancing two tricky issues, which is that on the one hand, the denser the population, the more likely the virus is to spread, and of course, that's where the numbers of the greatest infection are. On the other hand, the more rural you are, the less likely you are to be in an area where there's multiple hospitals and overload capacity and an extra ER doctor on staff. And so if you, if you are in a densely populated area, you are more likely to get infected. If you are in a thinly populated area, you're more likely to die if you need critical care. And, and so the, and so in balancing and thinking about how to ensure that the, you, you have the minimal public health damage, you have to think about both of those ratios. And, and I would just encourage us all to...
I think we lost your audio again there.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. We can't hear you anymore.
Can't hear you, Sean.
I don't know if he can hear us either. Um...
Am I back now?
Yes.
Oh, I've, I've got this computer that randomly mutes me. I need to repeat that whole thing, or did you get the gist of it?
I think we got the gist of it, which kind of leads me in somewhat to the next question, also from Councilman Coyne. You know, what are the chances of Illinois bailout package coming from Washington, and would either of you be supportive of a federal bailout for Illinois?
I got a real easy answer. Go to the per capita funding, and we don't need to worry about it.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the things that we have, we have touched is, there's this number that's called the FMAP, which is the, the federal matching percentage for Medicaid. Medicaid in almost all states, including Illinois, is the single largest item. And in Illinois, the federal government picks up 50% of all Medicaid spending. But the Senate has adopted rules whereby in Indiana, the federal government picks up 2/3 of Medicaid spending. In Kentucky, it's about 75%. And in states in the Sun Belt, it is over 85% of spending. All right? And if we simply had parity here, you know, I just have a hard time understanding why if you're a citizen of, you know, Cairo, Illinois, that across the Ohio River, is equal-sized town in Kentucky, gets one and a half times as much Medicaid matching money. It just, it's insane. And it's been, but this is the sort of thing that's been hurting Illinois. You know, a while ago, I did the calculation, you know, as, we lose about $20 to $40 billion every year. And if we had simply took, taken that money for the last 40 years and put it into a rainy day fund, instead of writing this giant check to, you know, basically the Sun Belt every year, that... And if we had simply took, taken that money for the last 40 years and put it into a rainy day fund, instead of writing this giant check to, you know, basically the Sun Belt every year, that, that the balance in that rainy day fund would be over $1.5 trillion. And if we had a rainy day fund with $1.5 trillion, we would not be talking about a bailout. And so I think that what we really need is, we need to just fix the formulas that bleed Illinois every single year. And there will be no difficulty then. If we just broke even with our, with the, our dealings with the federal government, there would not be a problem with Illinois being able to, you know, work its way out of the debt.
Is that something we can do soon?
Well, the, the, the FMAP is a number that we touched. Unfortunately, because the bill was written in the Senate, what they did is they had a, instead of 50%, it went up to 55%. They added 5% more federal matching to every state. What we should have done is simply, there's a floor, it can never go below 50%. We should have said, okay, it can never go below 60%. That would have helped large population states, you know, like Illinois that are stuck at 50%. And if you just took the Medicaid matching permanently from 50 to 60%, that would be many billion dollars of, of more fair federal spending. We'd still be losing money, but it would be losing a lot less. And that's a number that we have, that we have moved. And I think there, there is a lot of room there in simply making the federal matching for Medicaid better. It's a number of small, you know, this has been death by a thousand cuts. You know, there's every, every formula you look at disadvantages states like Illinois. If you look at affordable housing tax credits, we get rocked when you look at the formula there, where the citizens of Vermont or Montana or Rhode Island get three times more affordable housing tax credit per person, despite the fact that I don't think that Rhode Island is a particularly poor state. You know, and it just goes on and on. And we have, we just have to raise awareness in Congress on this and fix it formula by formula.
Just a, just a point to think about as far as like, at the risk of becoming too much of a historian here, the whole reason that we have a national bank and a federal financial system is because of this debate that our founders had coming out of the Revolutionary War, where some states were, you know, had no way that they could ever reimburse the debts that they had. And so we came up with this idea that says, we're going to have a federal financial system that will, will recognize that, you know, sometimes some states have greater challenges, sometimes all do, but we are after all the United States of America. We aren't 50 independent states and independent banks. And the, and we still have pieces of that logic. You know, Illinois in general is, is, you know, wealthier on average than someone in Mississippi, we're better educated on average than someone in Mississippi, we're certainly better looking.
Big for yourself.
And, and so it's appropriate that, you know, things like unemployment insurance and educational assistance would be higher in a place like Mississippi. But on the other hand, what that's done effectively is said that those states that are net generators of wealth for the federal treasury through tax proceeds, which Illinois is, are, we've essentially put the burden on the states to provide services that in other states are provided by the federal government. And that becomes manifest in a rhetoric that says, well, you know, pick whatever capital you want. I grew up, you know, we all bad mouth Springfield here. When I grew up in New York, everybody bad mouthed Albany. It was the same arguments, right? And, and these were two states that have consistently subsidized people to live in places that have a long track record of not producing wealth at a, at a level of, that, you know, is consistent with the per capita production elsewhere. And so if we're going to have that same federal funding model that Alexander Hamilton and our founders all put together, when we're running these massive disparities in state deficits, I think we need to get beyond this, this sort of juvenile argument of, well, that state legislator was super smart and fiscally responsible, and that one was foolish. They're all cut from the same cloth. But it's a lot easier to look smart when you're sitting on, you know, $1.40 a federal income for every dollar that you send to the federal government, as opposed to the, you know, less than 80 cents the Dominoyans get.
Right. Just trying to figure out how we can make those changes so that we can see the impact sooner, so we don't have to ask for that federal bailout, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Unfortunately, it's not just money. You're seeing that in unfair distribution of testing equipment, for example. You know, there was just an interview with the Senator from Wyoming, and he says, oh, it's wonderful, our testing is great, you know, we've got all we need, we've got, you know, he was bragging about all of the test equipment they had, they've got a lot more test equipment and it's sitting around not being used. Well, guess what? Wyoming has had a total of 16 COVID deaths. And so why is it that, that that Senator was able to get on the phone with whoever got on the phone and got the, and got that, a huge amount of frankly, less needed testing equipment, where people are, you know, dying in the, in the emergency rooms in New Jersey and you name it, in Illinois?
Okay. I'm going to move on to our next question. And if, like you said, if anybody else has any questions or comments, please type them in the chat, we'll make sure to pass the chat along as well. This is from Sean LaFortune, a Naperville Area Chamber of Commerce Board member. "Can you speak to the IRS guidance issued on April 30th that will disallow the deductions of expenses covered with proceeds from PPP? This would result in a significant tax bill for businesses that, that they may not have been aware of at the time of application."
I'm not aware of that issue. Bill, are you?
No, no, I'm not. So I did, but, but Maria from my office is listening in on the call, and if you get, yeah, then we'll, we'll look into it and get a response. So if we get your contact information back.
Yeah.
Well, what will exactly happen is that Sean's office and my office will decide where, where you live, and one or the other of our offices will field that question for you.
What advice do you have to our small business owners and all of our business owners right here? As you heard earlier, you know, more than a third of our business owners are getting ready to shut their doors the longer this continues. What hope, what can you give us to, to make, I don't want to say make us feel better, but some real hard facts and ideas of advice for our business owners is we're all navigating this together, but it's unknown and it's hard.
Well, maybe, you know, I am a little more hopeful than some other people that maybe there will be some medical progress in the next several months. You know, the, the thing that is most likely to happen on a useful time scale is, is treatments. You know, there are some antibody treatments, there are some antiviral treatments, there are, I think, over 60 clinical trials where drugs that are known to be producible in significant quantities are being tried. You know, if you look at how we finally made AIDS, you know, a, a problem that didn't, that is more tolerable these days, it was not with a single magic drug, it was with a cocktail of drugs. And that may be that over the next several months, we will find a cocktail of drugs that make COVID a much less dangerous thing, particularly if you're elderly. Now, if that happens, then the, the year that we will likely spend waiting for a vaccine will be more tolerable. You know, it will be easier to convince people to return as customers. Because that's one of the things, when I try to think this out, we can do anything, everything possible, you know, to keep, you know, to pay the rent and everything else, but, you know, if, you know, if the customer doesn't return, it's not going to work. And that's why it's so important to do a good job on the, you know, on the health side of this. You know, there's a, there's an interesting debate that's happening in all countries about masks. You know, masks look silly, they're a pain in the ass, you breathe on them, here. Here is my mask, okay? Boom, right here. All right? And every time, boom. And every time my wife and I go out for a walk right outside here, you know, we, we're sitting there muttering about the masks. But if you don't, the countries that had mandatory masking have a huge, a factor of two or more difference in how far this thing has spread and the economic damage it's done. And so the real, you know, that we have to ask ourselves questions that, okay, are you willing to look silly and deal with a sweaty mask in order to have an economy that opens more rapidly? And so there are questions like this, and, you know, we, we have to have, you know, actually look at the scientific numbers and the, and the data from other countries. You know, there's this very interesting comparison between Austria and Czechoslovakia that you can go look up, and you just look at the curves on those. Initially, the Austria and Czechoslovakia had essentially the same rules coming out of, of the crisis, except that one had mandatory, Czechoslovakia had mandatory masking, Austria didn't. And guess what? The numbers just skyrocketed in Austria. Austria looked and said, what are we doing wrong? Oh, masking. They went to mandatory masking and their numbers descended back. And so, you know, it's sacrifices like this, where you're asking everyone to, to do something that is, that's annoying and painful, but, you know, we'll save tens of thousands of elderly and we'll, we'll make our economy recover faster. I think I'll close with just one, one lesson from history. People have looked back at the 1918 influenza epidemic, and different cities locked down and reopened at different rates. The ones that did the best, if you look a year or two or three afterwards, they were the ones that locked down hardest and strongest. It was the ones that sort of tried to laugh it off and had the continuing stream of deaths from it. Those took the longest to recover. So this is sort of, it's one of these things like the, the famous test with the little kid, where you say, I'm going to give you two, you know, two jelly beans if you, if you don't eat it for the next 15 minutes. That's what we, we're going to have to do. We're going to have to not gobble that jelly bean for the time it takes to really beat down this epidemic. So we will be rewarded by a more rapidly recovering economy, you know, when we come out of it.
I hope so, because when you say months, my heart sinks.
Yes, my wife just told me it's a marshmallow, and she's probably...
The Stanford Marshmallow Study, eh? It's good, so. But yeah, I mean, you say months, and there's so many facts and whatnot behind that, but my heart sinks. You know, I know how hard our organization's having it, let alone some of the businesses that we're representing, and it's going to be a long road, and whatever support that we can get through more funding or guidance.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And then simple things like allowing you to cover more rent with PPP loans, you know, that is, certainly on Sean's list in mine. You know, but the big fight is just getting the basic money and, and making sure that it goes to the smaller end of businesses, where at least to me, more sympathetic. You know, our, our company went through this, I think, at least twice in my memory, where I always said, my God, how are we going to survive? The first time was when we were tiny and we delivered a huge pile of, of equipment expecting to be paid, and the moment it hit the loading dock of the person we delivered it to, they declared bankruptcy, and we were never going to get paid for something that was going to carry us for the rest of the year. And we just, you know, we had to go begging back to the bank to, to survive. And that was at a time when I was carrying an unlimited personal guarantee. You know, had our company gone under, I would have lost my house. Okay? And that, that was the way many small businesses exist today. You know, and, and the second time we went through it was after September 11th, when, you know, we're a theater lighting company, and after, I don't know if you remember, but after September 11th, Broadway shut down, people refused to go to, to, you know, movies or theater or anything. And you can imagine, everyone canceled their order for theater lighting equipment. We just saw our orders stop. And, and we were looking at a clock of, of a few months and, you know, had to do layouts. But, you know, that was at a time when our company was larger, we were ahead of a few hundred employees at that point. And then there is a buffer, and we didn't expect, you know, the government to come riding to our rescue as a larger company. And so what we have to do is put in place, if I, to the extent that I'll be writing the rules, it will be to really lend a hand to the smaller of the businesses, the sole proprietors, and, and lend some hand, but less of a hand, to companies as they grow, grow larger and more able to take care of themselves, and more owned by investors that aren't so much, don't have their life tied in it, they're just another stock they own. And so that's, that's how we, I hope we sculpt this. And I know, you know, Sean and I are going to be fighting to get the assistance skewed toward the bottom.
Thank you. Representative Caston, I'll give you a time for some closing comments here today. I want to be respectful of everybody's time and to be able to talk as well.
Yeah, so, you know, just because you'd ask things to be optimistic about, I, you know, I think, number one, the months are scary, but I think we do have to be honest about the numbers, because if we, you know, the, you know, the best way to torture people is to keep giving hope and taking away, right? And we can look at the numbers, we can see where it is, and I, you know, and I think the, you know, unless something magical happens that this virus really doesn't like a hot summer, we're not at the right place on the curves right now. And that's, and I think we have to deal with that, and we have to recognize it, and we have, the, the numbers don't lie. Now, having said that, I got two, two points of optimism for you. The, the first is, as you guys all know, you know, you, in the business world, you go, and if you're not happy with where you are, you go and you do a best practices assessment, and you see where your competitors are and other people in your industry are doing. And, and for goodness sakes, you never say, well, this person's making more money than me, they've, they got better customer growth, but I don't agree with their owner's politics, so I'm not going to do what, I'm not going to do what they do, right? You just do a best practices assessment. And as we look around the world, as we look around the different states, there are wild disparities. The, there are countries like New Zealand that haven't seen a new, a new case in a couple days now, because they moved actively early, they got strong testing out, they used the testing that was available, they did really aggressive contact tracing to go through. Germany is keeping national databases of, you know, a single database of who contacts who, so that if you, if you then add that I, I saw you, Kaylin, I'm going to be added in, and I will network through, and we'll know the context, so that you can run this as a, you know, as a proper public health single database. We're doing that at us. Some states are doing it, some states aren't. You know, we move around state boundaries, the virus certainly does. The, we've also seen countries that have been, have done a really aggressive job of making sure that there are resources to isolate people when they get infected, not just from their community, but even from their family. And, and that means making sure that you have, Germany again has, has been at the forefront of that, Massachusetts has taken it up, Governor Pritzker has said he's going to start adopting the, the Massachusetts model. But if you provide, you know, some certainty that you're not going to lose your house or your, or your income or your health insurance during the period that you're in a convalescent state, now you've shut down the virus, even in the absence of a drug, because the virus can't stop spreading anymore if you don't still have it. And as we look around the world, we've seen those best practices, and we, we know what to do. We just have to do it. And, and, you know, and as long as we can make a commitment to doing what's actually proven to work in other places, we can, we can get control over this and come through. The, the last thing that I'd leave you with, just as a source of optimism, is I am so consistently amazed through this process, and I shouldn't be, but I am, at how fundamentally decent people are. You know, if, 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 if we would have been sitting here three months ago and said, okay, in, in three months' time, we're going to be at, you know, 20% unemployment, massive disruption, all the stresses that you all feel in your lives, and what do you think the psyche of the average American is going to be like? You know, where's the over/under on that bet? It's probably somewhere near beyond Thunderdome if we, you know, we think about what we would have, what we would have projected. And just, there has been such a rise and so much decency from individuals, from businesses, people saying, okay, if I've got, if I've got needs, where can I reach out to? And the, you know, the surge in contributions to food pantries and, and, you know, businesses retooling to make PPE, even though they haven't done it before, and figuring out how to get that into the marketplace. And just all that decency is this nice reminder that, that at, at heart, the American people are good people. And, and if we lose that, we've lost everything. But so far, it's been, it's just been so inspirational to me, seeing how many people are stepping up. And I think that's ultimately the greatest comfort we have in this moment. Hold on to that and encourage it, make sure that that, that that love stays as loud as possible, because that's the thing that we're going to get all through this together with.
And it's been wonderful seeing the community really come together. And now I think the community has come together to help support our first responders and so many others. And now I think the community is coming together to support our businesses, because they're understanding, you know, they're trying to rally for our restaurants, and now it's looking at the other small businesses. And as time goes on and more businesses have to announce they're permanently closed or they can't come back, I hope to continue to see that rally around supporting our business community as well. Speaking of the business community, thank you all of you for calling in today, I appreciate it. A special thank you to our elected officials, Councilman Coyne, and I know Councilman Patrick Kelly's here as well, and to our board members, our Naperville Area Chamber of Commerce Board members for coming, and again, the great Reba Osborne for putting all of this together. And she'll make sure that both of your representatives get the questions from the chat, they can follow up with you, Sean, on the tax question and a few other things. But thank you for your time and being able to share a little bit of insight as to what you're doing and how you're fighting for our community and our businesses.